They're out there. It's very generous of them.
I'd say, call meeting to order, roll call, everyone's here except Commissioner Norwood. Not the year that he's been in. Item number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the rescheduled regular session agenda of September 24th, 2019. Anybody?
I've got one.
Okay.
On the consent, list of consents, the number eight, declare Waterfront Construction LLC in default, it's contract project number M-1902. One, why are they in default? Number two, were they bonded? Will we be able to collect against their bond? And number three, will we ever allow them to bid anything else in the city?
Yes, yes, and no. Marali's gonna come up there and explain, but Waterfront was awarded the low bid on performing sidewalk work, I believe ADA compliance work. They did not move expeditiously, did not follow instructions from engineering, and pretty much left town. Marali can update us on that status. So, yes, we have sent them a stop work order, and essentially this item would terminate their agreement and authorize us to reach out to somebody just to fix what they've messed up, because they messed up driveways, they dug out driveways, and messing things up that we probably need to fix right away. On the next meeting on October 1st, there's an item for the actual change order and amount. But Marali, do you want to address those issues with Waterfront? And what we're doing with the change order to fix it? And then, I'm pretty sure we don't, they'll be off our bid list now.
That's correct.
And yes, I think we do have, we have a performance bond, so.
This is the location of the Garfield Elementary School, and some of the, like, their work, this is the standard driveway, they're supposed to do it, and some they have done, like, it doesn't meet our standard driveway. Like, we keep on enforcing them, but the contractor does it by his, like, his own terms.
It's like they did it backwards.
Backwards.
Oh, my.
And these are some of the areas that they did not meet, the tight slopes. And...
Nice. Okay.
And this is, like, typically, they need to cut the concrete within 24 hours, and he poured and he's gone a couple days and never come back. So, that entire sidewalk needs to come out.
Okay.
And it repeated, like, he messed up, like, five blocks, and we literally told the contractor, he cannot, I mean, he has to finish one block at a time before he go to the second block. We insisted him, but he tried to do everything, like, wherever the straight sidewalk is there, he done it, and wherever the tie-ins and more complicated work, he left it. So, but the straight part where he supposed to do it, he didn't do it right.
All right.
The solution is, like, to terminate the contractor, and we are bringing back the agenda item next commission meeting with a change order to one of our local contractors to fix the, whatever he messed up. And, like, the current contractor is eight blocks total, but the remaining three blocks will be bid in the next phase of the project.
And we feel like that performance bond will make us whole on that project.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you want to leave it in consent items, pull it out? You're good?
No, I'm good with it, I just was curious what was going on there.
Well, it looks like, I was looking, so they were, I mean, they were significantly lower than, this is one where we only got three bids on them, and one of the bid was, like, twice that, and one was half again as high. Is that the kind of thing that, like, raises a red flag when we see it? Or...
It does.
Man, that's a different Waterfront contract.
We typically qualify the contractors, I'm sure we did in this case, based on what they submitted.
Yeah, we did pre-qualify them, post-qualify, once we got the bids. So, the contracts, what we got it from them, like, they were pretty satisfied, otherwise we wouldn't even come back to you to operate.
I mean, that, that contract was bid out at 147. Our engineer's estimate was 50, 60 grand over that. Nothing ever comes in below the engineer's estimates, that's remarkable. Okay. Okay.
Now, just to clarify, not everybody that does come in does poor work.
No, yeah.
Clearly, this work is substandard.
Yeah.
I can't remember a time, at least since I've been city manager, that we've done this or had to do this. So, no, we won't consider them for the future because we prefer to do this.
Okay. Okay.
Just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Good. Any others?
I had a question about NAPA buyback, I saw that in a couple places, is that the auto people?
Yeah, I'll tell you briefly, we, some years ago, probably, how long's it been? Aaron, is it been?
2014.
2014. We had, back in about 2014, the city had looked at hiring NAPA to run our warehouse. They're specialized in auto parts, and I believe can provide savings in auto parts. But we had them run our whole warehouse, because with our whole warehouse, we had more than just auto parts, we had water, water line parts, and trash, polycarves and stuff. Our experience over five years has been that we don't believe that, while they may save us on auto parts, we believe we're paying more on other stuff. So, we made the decision to go away from the, basically to terminate the NAPA contract, based on the terms of the contract, which allowed for, I think it was 60 days notice or something like that. We have done that, and as part of that, we have to buy back the inventory that they bought from us originally. Any, any auto part inventory that they have, they'll, they'll take that as part of the deal and go away. But the stuff that we had them buy at the time, which I think was water parts and whatever Aaron's gonna tell us in a minute, and Aaron, feel free to come on up and fill in the holes for me. We did not know when we did the budget, how much the inventory would cost to buy back, for various reasons. So, it's turned out to be $280,000, but do you want to...
Right, absolutely. There's been also some, besides what they bought from us originally in 2014, of course, they've had to replenish that stock, and so, there's additional items too in there. There's all kinds of place, all kinds of items that are in that inventory, and so, there are actually 32,000 items that we're buying back for that $287,000. That will be a good stock for us to start our warehouse from and go from there.
So, we did add a person in the budget in the warehouse, particularly a parts attendant.
In the fleet department, yes.
In the fleet department, and we also upgraded an assistant position to handle ordering responsibilities and things in that department. And we believe that we could operate the warehouse more efficiently and for less money than what was being done. That's what that item does, is to amend the budget to buy back that inventory.
Right, to fulfill our contractual obligation there.
The, the deal when we set it up for them was, we were buying parts at cost plus 10%, right?
Yes.
Are, will it, do we have sources for those parts which will have a markup of less than 10%?
We do in water parts and other, polycarves, because what was happening is they would end up ordering from the same people we would.
And then tack on 10%.
At pretty much the same price, and we would be paying 10%. Now, on auto parts, I don't doubt that they might be able to do better than we can. Another, a difference between our focus now and running the warehouse and what we did before is, we're going to try to run on much leaner inventory too, because we know 85-plus percent of the parts should be available here in town from NAPA or O'Reilly's or Autozone. We should, we can, if we plan properly, just call and have them deliver the same day many times or certainly the next day. So, so, yes, on auto parts maybe, but not on everything else.
And then, when we bought those back from NAPA, was it at the same contractual rate where it was cost plus 10, or?
I believe it was...
It was at their cost, or at the cost that they bought it from us at, on those items, so. There was no markup on the buyback piece of it.
Sure, when they ran the warehouse, did they actually have some of their people in there, in our facility?
They originally, they originally had two people run the warehouse, and then over time, they moved one person out and it was run by one person. So, and I don't know, that was Randy. Randy's been absorbed somewhere else or not, but...
Are we gonna have to buy a bunch of new computers and inventory management systems? Weren't they using their own technology?
They would've had their own, yes, they had their own system, we use Great Plains, right?
Right.
And Cartograph systems that we have already.
So, we don't have to go spend another 50 grand on inventory management?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay.
Good.
Did that answer your question about how they, they operated it and how many people?
I just wondered if they had somebody help.
Jerry, thank you, you answered your question.
It, it's at a secure site, I would imagine, I mean, this would be a terrible thing if somebody got in there.
It's at the service center, and it's at the, what do we call it? Does it definitely got a number? It's across from building one and...
Building 100 and Service Center 200.
Yeah, it's a, it's pretty much the whole building there. The warehouse is at the south end, and it can be secured with locked doors, and it's inside the Service Center compound, which...
Okay. We don't need to advertise where it is, I just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure that it's secure, you know? Put a retired police dog in there or something.
Somebody can lift 32,000 parts overnight, that'll be pretty impressive.
Jerry, you have any other? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on. Item number three, present a financial update, and we've got the right person.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Missures. It's gonna be kind of a short update, we're only two months in so far. We have data for July and August, so we're just gonna hit some high points on that and then answer any questions that you may have. First thing we're gonna look at is general fund revenue. You can see here in the first column is receipts, year-to-date, what was budgeted year-to-date, based on, when we think those revenues are gonna come in, based on historical revenue projections. You can see in every category, we're lagging from where we have been in previous years. The biggest concern, of course, is sales tax, that has continued to come in lower. We're right now at 4.32% behind budget for the year for sales tax. And that sales tax category includes sales tax, use tax, and tobacco excise tax, combined together. Our use tax has actually been up a little, and the sales tax has been further down than even 4.63%. So, that is a concern during the budget process, you'll remember that we did include a 2% increase in the sales tax revenue for the year. So, we will continue to watch that, but that is an area that has been discussed with the staff in our Monday morning meeting, so that they're aware in case they need to make any types of adjustments throughout the year, just so that they already have that lead on it, so that they can adjust as needed. When we look at where we're coming at compared to the entire budget, every category is close to that 16.7% that we're looking for, if it were spread evenly coming in throughout the year. Court fees are coming in a little bit lower, and I haven't been able to pinpoint exactly, it seems to be in every line on court fees, so I'm not sure what's driving that there. Everything else, grants is one grant that's causing that delay. We're historic preservation grants, budget for 12, 250, it's probably gonna happen in the last half of the year, so we'll see that lag until that grant comes through later on in the year. We're, of course, on budget for transfers into general fund from EMA for operations. When we look at the total, we're 413,000, or 4.44% down through August, largely attributable to that sales tax. The 16.8% is also a little behind where we'd like to be. Our three and five-year averages are more in the 17.2 to 18.1 range, typically what we've collected in the first two months. So, we'll continue to keep an eye on it, but we are slightly behind where we typically are at this point in the year.
Any thoughts on why that sales tax is down so much? I mean, other than the obvious, that they're not buying as much?
Right, and I think the economy in general is lagging a little bit. I know that we talked about, even in our retirement committee meeting last week, that the economy as a whole is behind a little, there's an inverted yield curve, so people aren't out there spending as much as they typically have, so the economy's just pulled back a little bit.
Have, have we looked at some other communities? Are they experiencing the same, or?
Yeah, it's across the state.
Okay.
In general, there'll be pockets, of course, that are affected by oil and gas or other factors, but in general, it's across the board.
Sales tax could be anything, do we know which commodities specifically, or is it pretty much across the board?
There was, I did look at it by the codes on industry, and there was nothing that really stood out, it just seemed to be kind of across the board.
Right. Seems like all of our dispensaries could make that up.
Whenever we look at the sales, just the sales tax, I did pull in September here on this one, because we do have that data available now. The blue line is the 18, 19, so last year's receipts. The green is this year's budget, and you can see, again, even though it looks a little lower, sales tax came in quite a bit higher than what we had budgeted last year. So, the 2% increase still left us lower than last year, but the red line is where we're actually coming in in receipts. So, we're coming in lagging July and August. September, we did have an increase, and that is due to use tax. We had an unusual collection in use tax for $963,000, when typically our average is $248,000. So, I did call the Oklahoma Tax Commission to check on what, if that was an error, what was going on there. They did state that we did have a return for one customer come in, that was almost $550,000 for use tax. They said it was a, an industry that likely could submit a refund request, as they could have reported to the wrong location. A lot of times, they said, we'll be involved with oil and gas-related materials, and they pay those into wherever they are supposed to be delivered, and they may just not know the exact lines for where each municipality ends and begins as their national company. And so, not that we won't have that for sure, but they said, you know, you may just hold off on counting on that money, just in case it comes through. So, I don't want to count on it yet, but I have checked into it to make sure that it truly is owed to the city, and as of this point, yes, it is. And so, that's really what's causing this big spike right here, is we have a $691,000 variance, and $550,000 of that is from that one return that was turned in.
What, do we know what the NICS code is for dispensaries?
This is another thing I talked to the Tax Commission about, whenever, probably a couple of weeks ago. The NICS code is gonna be based on whatever their primary, whatever their primary business is. So, if they were already open and they just added a dispensary to their items that they offer, it's going to be under what they originally opened under, so they are not all categorized together. So, it'll be difficult to do comparisons on what's going on there. We are looking into getting some better data on that, and I've requested some information on the Tax Commission, so we can get that.
I mean, there's, you know, a bazillion of these codes, kind of interesting to know...
There are. There, there were two or three that I found, and they all had different codes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's not that helpful.
Yes, and so, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can put that together and analyze it, just looking at those specific businesses. If we take the same, same data, so with that one anomaly, it looks like we're $398,000 up on the year. If we removed that one tax return, we'd be down $148,000 compared to budget for the year. These first two months, that decrease was $293,000, and of that, 177 of it was, of course, the general fund, and the remaining, almost 15,000 was split between fire and police for the public safety tax. So, that's the difference between this 290 and the 277 you saw a couple slides ago. More questions on sales tax? Okay. Move on to EMA. This is a pie chart showing the different revenues that come into the municipal authority. Right now, all of these percentages are pretty much on track, other than this miscellaneous one right here, this 12% is only budgeted to be at 3%. And the thing that's causing that is, we have loan proceeds for the Call Lake that we have to draw down to fund things like easements, purchases, or other, the amendment for Garver that we just did a couple of meetings ago. And so, as we do those and do drawdowns, we have to recognize revenue, that revenue wasn't budgeted. When we make adjustments to accruals, at the end of the year, it will back out all that revenue, because it's not truly revenue, and it will be removed. But on a cash basis budget, we have to show it like this right now. So, other than that, everything else is about on track. There is, the whole pie actually, though, is a little bigger than what we had projected it to be, so that's good news. When we look at the actual numbers of where we are, again, receipts, we have 11.368 million in receipts, whereas we had budgeted 9.6. Again, this 1.2 is that loan proceeds. So, if we were to remove that, we're still up 500,000 over where we'd planned to be at this time this year. The only one category that you'll see is lagging is this 124 in transfers, and again, that's transfers in and sales tax revenue from general fund, so it's directly tied to that revenue being down. As far as percentages go, water's up about 12.8% over where we budgeted. Looks to be across the board. I've looked at industrial and commercial and residential, doesn't look to be just in one area, it looks to be across all areas there causing that. So, just higher consumption than what we had planned for in the first two months. Other than that landfill, we did have a big increase there, it was up 77% over where we budgeted, and there were just a couple of commercial customers that had $40,000-plus dollar bills in August for taking some dumps to the landfill, so that was an accurate amount there. Other than that, small increases from where we planned to be at. And if we look at it again here, the first two months, that 11.3 compared to the 57, we're at 20%. If we were to remove this for that, adjusting for the loan proceeds and take that out, we'd still be at 18% for the year. So, we were tracking ahead of where we should be at that 16.6%. So, we're doing well in EMA revenue for the year. The other large revenue that we have is hotel motel tax. Again, same as before, the blue is last year's receipts. Green is this year's budget, we had adjusted down, knowing that that was, those were kind of an anomaly last year at that time. And you can see the, in the red are our actual receipts, and they are, again, lower. When we look at current year actuals compared to last year's, we're down 120,000 or 34.45% over last year. And when we look at it compared to budget, though, it's a much smaller number, we're down 25,000 or 10.4%. The one good thing about this one is, when it is down, we don't have to find the whole amount to cut. A third, or three-eighths of it is automatically passed off to the county as part of this tax, and so, that's 37.5%. And so, about 25,000 that we would have to find a cut if it doesn't come back up, 9,500 of that's an automatic cut, as it's not a payout to the county, so we'd be looking at needing $16,000 to cut for the year, if it continues on this trend. Those are the revenue areas, now we're just gonna kind of look at funds overall. This is just the budget numbers, fund by fund. Again, 16.67 is where we'd be at if revenue and expenses came in evenly throughout the year, so just want to talk through. General fund, we talked about. Where we're at there on the expenditures, there is, the main driver here is, there's two things coupling together, we have lower payments out, but we also have budgeted insurance to be paid, we budgeted it to be paid in two payments, and we paid all in one payment in July. So, as that second payment falls off of the budgeted month, it will even out there, so no concerns really. The next one that has some higher percentage is airport, and this is a good news story, I'm glad to report to you. We have had some really, really high sales in jet A fuel for the year due to some renovations out advance that are going on, and I, based on when we thought that the runway would be done, it's been a little longer than what we projected. So, we have a lot higher cost of goods sold to buy jet fuel, but also sales on that jet fuel, so we definitely will be coming back.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, keep it up.
She did concrete work on the base, and you guys give more money.
Which is great, to help offset the cost for the new terminal and everything that we're doing at the airport, so.
So, we spent it all, you say?
I'll just say, the latest update that I got is the last week of October, it was supposed to be the first week of October, and now it's the last week, so it's at least that long.
Yeah, so as soon as we know what that's going to be, and have a better projection of where we're gonna end the year, we will bring back an appropriation for the expenditures on that jet fuel to buy, but we do have the revenue to offset those expenditures. And the other reason why there's such a big gap between 41% and 60% is the rollover encumbrance related to the terminal wasn't completed as of June 30, so that also contributes to that factor there. As we look at Gulf, Gulf is, even though it's at high at 22, it's still lagging, we're about 11,000 behind in where we thought we'd be in revenues. But their expenditures are coming in right where we planned them to be, so may pick up. I know there's been a lot of rain, so that's probably affected a little bit their revenue there. Street and alley, again, revenue's coming in fine, we are missing one month of vehicle tax, and it's just a lag. It gets paid from the state to the county to us, and so, sometimes that happens, where we may have a month that we get two payments, and so, I'm not concerned there on that one. This one, again, 45% in all of these capital funds is due to those encumbrance rollovers that we had at the end of the year. This fund had 1.48 million that was rolled over, so we're looking at expenditures plus encumbrances here, and almost all of that was rollover encumbrances, that's why that percentage is so high right now. EMA, we talked about the revenue already, at 20%, we're tracking a little bit high, and this just has to do with timing of payments on some professional services, the Stover contract and some others, we're a little bit behind, we got that caught up, so that's gonna even out no problem. EEDA, this one is tracking in fine on revenues, even though it looks a little low, it's, we're only $4,400 off, so that makes a big difference in that percentage they're looking at. But 24%, again, not a concern, the majority of the payments for EEDA go out in big quarterly chunks to ERDA, so 25% is where I'd expect that to be at this point. BDA, all of that revenue gets transferred in at one time from the general fund at the beginning of the year, we have to have that money there to fund Mike Coop's contract when we do that encumbrance, and so, again, that's why this is high. That includes all of Mike Cooper's expense for the whole year, as part of an encumbrance that already been paid. And then, capital improvement and street improvement, revenues are coming in fine. These two numbers, again, are big because of rollovers, and capital improvement, we rolled over 4.175 million of this 4.13, or 3.4, sorry, and street improvement of this 2.15, we rolled over 1.89 million. So, we haven't spent a lot in these funds yet, they're working on getting them engineered and whatever else needs to happen before we can get them out to bid, so they'll be later on in the year when we spend a lot of those dollars. The remaining funds we have here, sanitary sewer, actual revenue, we do that based on reimbursements, we actually have not spent any funds this year, this whole amount was a rollover encumbrance, so we've paid $0, that's why there's no revenue yet. And once we pay out money, we'll do a reimbursement to bring revenue into that fund. Stormwater is, excuse me, only 10,000 behind where we projected in revenue, that, that could even out next month. Again, 1.7 of expenditures and 1.1 of that was rollover. Water capital, this is so high because of the funds being moved over for the easements that we needed for Call Lake, the $3 million. As that gets spent down, that will, we'll have the expenditures to offset that, so it won't look as skewed. And then, right here, 9.9, that majority of that's the Garver contract that was rolled over from last year. And this doesn't include, of course, the, the contract we just did this month, so these numbers will change significantly in water capital, as we continue to work on the Call project. Capital project escrow, we bring in whatever throughout the year, no expenditures happen until June. We do that one time a year to draw out what we need to of the basins to go to the project, so there'll be no expenditures there till June. 911, this 44% in the revenue looks a little high, and that is due to the fact that they got an operating transfer of 425,000 from police and fire and general fund upfront, so that they would have money to operate for the year, instead of being spread throughout 12 months like they, a lot of them typically are for the transfers. Actually, other than that, the revenue is lagging a little behind, it's only about $6,000, though, off from where we thought we would be at this point. It's only about six thousand dollars though off from where we thought we would be at this point for nine one one. And they're staying under and expenditures doing well. That's really because we had budgeted for a payment on their Motorola lease. It's sixty seven thousand. That actually I think is on the meeting tonight for approval. So it's just a month off. So that will bring that percentage back in line with where it's we expected it to be. Police lagging a little bit. That's sales tax mainly. Also, they're a little bit actually under in grant revenue from where we thought they would be. And I think that's just timing of getting reimbursements on grants. They're a little higher on their expenditures just because they've already secured all of their police vehicles for the entire year. The event center, both of them are up. Again, this is one that will make a big difference whenever we do that accrual adjustment. And as long as they're tracking close to percentages with each other, then we should be in good shape. The biggest thing to be watching in the EACH, sorry, is the hotel tax and we'll adjust and talk with Kevin as needed if we need to pull back anywhere there to make ends meet with the hotel tax shortage, if there is one. As we continue to watch fires on track, they're showing a little bit lower because they have a big expenditure for their fire truck, which has not been purchased yet. And so kind of skews their numbers a little bit on their operations for the year. CDBG again is a straight reimbursement. So as we as we expend it, then we'll receive it in. So usually expenses are a little bigger than receipts, just because there'll be a lag time in between the two. And then EPTA. We're looking to be on track on revenue. Expenditure looks to be a little high and that has to do with the bus grants that or the buses that we've ordered with the grants. There's six buses and once we've paid that we'll get the revenue offset and it will even that out a little bit. Overall, based on where we're at right now, I would say we're definitely gonna have an appropriation coming before you in the next few months for airport. Once we have finalized what that number needs to be. And other than that, we're keeping an eye on it. I'll continue to update staff and if there's any adjustments that need to be made at the level of adopting a change to the budget, we'll bring that back to you. Is there any questions you have?
Thanks, Erin. Item number four, discuss EPTA revenue miles audit. That was the last item on your slide, right? So that was a transition?
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. I just want to go over a lot of you here has talked about audits. Our particular audit that we have with ODOT is a mileage audit. Because that does a lot in determining how much money we receive from the state of Oklahoma. One of the funds that we get, we get several different funds, which we'll talk about, is the revolving fund. And the revolving fund is the one that uses the audit specifically in its contract. So a lot of this will get confusing. It confuses me and I've been here for five years now. So but I want to enlighten you guys on what we do and how this all transpires. So let's see here. Okay. When we begin this, we have a computer program that actually tabulates all of this information. This is for our particular year. One of the things that we do is we have two fiscal years. We have a fiscal year with you. And then we also have a fiscal year with ODOT and those are not the same months. So we do have to work off of both of those. This just lets us know the revenue miles that we do use in this column. That is what the audit is looking at and that's what we review. The auditors come in, determine whether those are accurate. They will actually be in a vehicle, one of our buses and drive around and determine that miles are calculated correctly. That they're put into the computer correctly. And then they will track a particular bus from the very beginning miles June first or July first, excuse me, all the way to June thirtieth. And they will track each and every mile and each and every passenger. So they want to determine that all of those run correctly. And if there's if there's more than a hundred mile gap in something, red flags are raised and there's a question. The computer does let us know if there's any of what we call overlap miles of that hundred miles. The computer will let us know, we'll find it and then we can determine what the problem is. But just to let you know kind of what the revenue miles are then, are those miles they use that the vehicle is driven? Okay, it gets kind of confusing from here on out. Revenue miles is when there's a person in the vehicle paying two dollars, five dollars, however much for the trip. And sometimes vehicles don't have someone in them when they're going to pick someone else up. Sometimes they do have someone when they're going to a second place to pick something up, someone up. So sometimes those overlap. And so you've got revenue doubling at that time. Makes sense? Okay. Vehicle miles, those are how many miles the vehicle is driven. Now ignore these first few months here because our computer program, which ODOT provides to us, was inaccurate. And therefore they had to come in here in October and rework their computers to start to start tabulating the correct miles. So what the vehicle miles are, are the miles driven by the vehicle. So if someone's not in it, if they are in it, it doesn't matter. Those are the vehicle miles.
For revenue miles, it doesn't matter if there's one passenger, two, three, four, five. It just counts as revenue miles. Each mile is counted only as one mile. Is that right?
Right. Because you could possibly have two people in there at the same time. It's only gonna count that mile once.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Inner city miles, these are trips that are to Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Perry, Stillwater. Those are the places we go to as far as air force or I'm sorry, the airports or they're to the bus terminals. Those are considered inner city miles. Now, if we do take someone to the doctor in Oklahoma City, if we swing by the airport, that's an inner city mile. If we don't swing by the airport to see if there's someone that needs a ride. Yeah. So inner city miles have to be a connection of us with either a bus, a train or an airport. Those are getting ready to be recalculated as soon as the FTA allows it and those inner city miles will connect into our vehicle miles eventually and it won't be a separate fund because those dollars are allotted differently. Seat miles. Seat miles are just miles driven on and on. So if they go to a house, pick someone up, go to Kmart, drop them off, come back to pick someone else up, drop them off, and it goes around and then they come back to our facility. Every mile that's driven, if they go and take a lunch and they stop there for their break for fifteen minutes, all of those miles are counted. That's everything. Seat miles are everything. Those two people that are riding together at the same time, but we don't count the revenue miles. Those are seat miles. So you're gonna start doubling up everything. Everything goes in that pile. Every passenger's miles, every vehicle's miles. Every mile. If they're going to get worked on, that's where those miles are. Empty miles. That's when they do come back from Walmart. They've done dropped everybody off and they're coming back to us. Empty miles means they're completely empty. There's no one in their vehicle whatsoever. And passenger trips, that's the number of trips. Now we're out of miles to trips. And all this will come back together in determining how much we're going to get along with those miles. Some of the trips statistics that we have going back several years here, you can look at where we started down here in thirteen fourteen. This was the year I first came about in the middle of this. And our trips were pretty low at two hundred and seven thousand. We worked them up to two hundred and ten. We started determining what our problems were, establishing, okay, we need to do something better. And that's when we started working contracts, PR. I started feeling like I knew what I was doing. And we started getting everything together. We got some new contracts with some new agencies out across the community. And so we worked our way up and we're starting to level off. And that's where this is and why they're a little lower. We're not going out of out of town as much to the Oklahoma City, Tulsa and those areas. So our revenue miles have gone down and and we can continue to see those go down just a little bit. Because we make a little more money going out of town. But it's really hard for us to get out of town and still serve our community because we have so many people to serve in town. In one hour, we can serve forty people. In one hour, we can serve two people maybe going to Oklahoma City and back. We can make a little more money cash wise. But the state is going to look at the miles that we're providing as as well as the number of passengers. So it kind of makes a circle and just kind of goes around and circle on that. Where you're trying to get the dollars upfront for the people paying or if you want the miles and the passenger numbers from ODOT. On the mileage audit itself, we obtain the qualified auditors and they're also the ones that usually put the bid in for financial audit with Erin as well. So they do a great job working with us, getting into our computer systems and pulling all of the information they need. Cause needless to say, there's a lot of information to pull to track. Each mile with each vehicle and each passenger. Once we get that access to the computers, again, they select the vehicle, they'll go in, look at the miles while it's sitting on the lot, take a ride in it, verify that it's so many miles over here to administration and back. And they want to make sure that our buses are running accurately. You know, that we don't have some big fancy something inside of it that's making the miles go further or something.
Bigger tires or something like that.
Then they start comparing the miles on several vehicles. They'll take a month's worth of a vehicle. Look at that and try and make sure that they can see every single mile that's been tracked. We do have it on paper and we also have it in the computer system and you can actually see each individual person from the time they're picked up for the whole day for that individual. So those miles all have to match per day, per week, per month, per year. And that's what the auditors want to see. Again, like I said, the auditors ride in the buses to verify that. And once they have all of that information, the number of revenue miles are confirmed and verified with Mylanet computer program. That's another computer program provided by ODOT. It's a little more accurate than the transit assist that we use, like I said, that they had to work on back in October. But all of the information comes out of Mylanet, everything we do. That's what ODOT looks at. That's what they want to see. The other thing revolving funds are their state revolving fund dollars. Oklahoma receives out of the transit program, out of the transit dollars from the federal government, they receive five million four hundred sixty two thousand five hundred dollars. That is allotted to Oklahoma. Once Oklahoma determines where their dollars are gonna go and how much, it's based again on miles and number of passengers. And then they distribute that out to the different transits across the state. Now that includes all of the transits, which we'll get to in a minute because we're not a part of all of the transits across the state. We have a little different determination of that. But we do, we have this last year received in the eighteen nineteen year, we received forty six thousand four hundred and eight dollars. Basically, what this does is make our match to receive our federal funds. So the state dollars back to us to match the dollars that come from the federal government. However, the federal dollars do come through the state of Oklahoma and we'll talk about that in a second as well. That's the state dollars and then our dollars. Okay, so what does all of this mean that I've just told you? ODOT, y'all know what that is. Oklahoma Department of Transportation. We are the transit division though. That's the group that we're under. FTA is the Federal Transit Administration. And for those that don't know all the information, in twenty twenty, we'll start the new census. And ENID, it falls just under fifty thousand right now in our population. In about two to three years, once they determine and finalize the population for the ENID area, it should be over fifty thousand. Once that's determined, we are going to move out of the fifty three eleven program. We are, we received the grant from the state of Oklahoma. It's a federal formula grant for rural areas. We receive it from ODOT though. They're the ones that put it out and we're a sub recipient of it. But because it's a federal formula, that means it's determined by our miles and our passengers. So then we come down to, so this is what we're receiving right now is fifty three eleven grant funds. That's what you guys are going to go later this evening and hopefully accept that we do again for the next upcoming year. The state revolving funds are the ones we just talked about. Those are straight from the state. Those are straight from Oklahoma. They don't go through anybody else from what we can see. We don't have to ask the federal government. They don't have to send an application for us. Our TAP, we receive five thousand dollars under the fifty three eleven funds right here. Our TAP is an automatic five thousand dollars that we receive for any sort of training and anything that we need to go like to conferences, whether it's here, wherever. It's just anything for training. Fifty three ten, this used to be a separate program in the area agencies on aging under the Department of Human Services. This was moved just within the last six months to ODOT Transit. So they now provide these funds. These are for vehicles that are used for elderly and disabled. We have four of those right now at this time. Fifty three oh seven, that's what we're going to be moving to hopefully within the next three to four years. That means our funds will come directly from the federal government. It will not have to sift through and we become a sub recipient of ODOT.
That's what will replace the fifty three eleven grant?
Yes, sir.
When we get over fifty thousand for a population.
Yes, once the population is determined, I mean, we all know it's over fifty thousand now. But it has to officially be over fifty thousand and we can't do that till after the census.
Is that more competitive?
No. Because as of now, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Lawton and Norman, I believe, are the four that receive fifty three oh seven funds now. It will be us and Stillwater and I believe there's one other city. I'm not sure which one that will also move into the fifty three oh seven area. We're kind of this small dog right now of the fifty three eleven. We're the we're the little guys. We receive a very small amount of money from them, from ODOT. Stillwater receives a large amount of money. They do a lot of miles, a lot of vehicles because they're going to Oak Mulgee and a lot of other places on a daily basis. And they receive a lot of money. When we move into federal, we're still gonna be the little dog, but we're moving into a lot bigger dollars. Stillwater moves into fifty three oh seven, it's gonna be really tough because It's going to be really tough because they're not going to be the big dog anymore. They have to start back down at the little dogs with us.
So I'm understanding that we may be subject to more grant money then?
I hope so. Yes, sir. I would hope so. Yes.
That's a good cautious answer.
Fifty-three-thirty-nine, this is grant funds that you guys have been voting on over the last several months and accepting those contracts to where we're receiving new buses. So the six buses that Aaron mentioned earlier, those, that's where that grant funding is coming from. And again, it's from ODOT. It's sifted from FTA through ODOT to us. We're receiving six buses and all new radio equipment for all of our buses. So we're pretty excited about that one. And anytime they can help us, the grant matches are either eighty or eighty-five percent from ODOT and then we, we match the rest. And again, we can use state revolving funds in any of those matches. And state revolving funds, again, back circled around is the dollar funds. We receive state from this, straight from the state. And we use the audit for on that contract. There's so much more in the fifty-three eleven. But the audit is one of our big requirements and one of our biggest parts that we do in our department, so. This is a breakdown. We're three years behind on our grant funding. That doesn't mean we're three years shy. It just means that's how they calculate them, is back from three years. So they use our miles and our passenger numbers from three years ago to where we're at now. So the numbers that you saw earlier that determined how our numbers grew of the number of passengers that we had and the number of miles, we're not going to get to see that for another two years. So we're going to see a big increase and then it may get a little smaller again. But this shows exactly. This right here, we're, we're in the yellow. We're the yellow parts. And determining how much we receive. And there's a computer program that ODOT has that determines the percentage that we receive. Because it needs to be broken up amongst all the rural transits across the state. So this is the revenue miles. This is the passenger miles. And these are the passenger trips. So all that information you saw earlier, this is where it comes in. This is actually their computer program, a printout from them that determines, and then here's the inner city. And again, it's talking about eventually doing away with this. So we're not going to have to see the inner city. And they're slowly going to take it out over the next three years. And then our fare box incentive. This is the money that comes in from our fares, from passengers, contracts and everybody. And this is also taken into account on the determination of the numbers as well. And that's calculated in. Once that's all put in, they come down here to a total allocation. And since my eyes are so good, it's three hundred thirty-six thousand and seventy-seven dollars, which is the most we've received in many. I think I can have Aaron agree with me that it's been many years since we've seen that much, that much money come in. And remember, five thousand of that is specified for training. But the rest of it is broken out into our fifty-three eleven dollars and our revolving fund dollars. Do you guys have any more questions? Now that I've thoroughly confused you?
That's good. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How long does someone have to wait to get a bus?
Too long. Are you specifying passengers or for us to receive a new one? As a passenger?
Yeah, as a passenger. Someone calls. I mean, what would be difficult?
We request a twenty-four hour in advance notice because we are so busy. So we request twenty-four hours. If you call the same day, we charge a little bit more. We try to get you on in the same day. It's very difficult because we are swamped. We have the most employees we've probably had in many years as well. And we're still covered up and it still increases daily. We had the wonderful opportunity, wonderful opportunity of going out to the airport and assisting them last week. That was, oh, that was a blast. And we provided seventy-three passengers a ride on Monday and threw seventy-three passengers on Tuesday to do that. And we, we love doing stuff like that for the community. So, but that helps us out. But it does hold back on, again, on our passengers that we have throughout the community in making sure they get there. And our, our biggest is the wait to get home. I wish we had an answer for that.
Yeah, it's mostly all scheduled travel. It's not so much called for.
It's not Uber.
Yeah, right.
We, we are not a cab and we are not Uber at all.
It's the normal wait time, about thirty minutes to an hour if they've scheduled the day before.
When we schedule, when we schedule the day before, we schedule an hour ahead. Because you have a thirty-minute window to be picked up in that first thirty minutes. And the last thirty minutes, you may be riding with someone and therefore they may have to be dropped off. So we're going to give thirty minutes to make it across town.
And she said it's difficult, same-day service, so they're.
Yes.
I know we do have some complaints from time to time.
I haven't had any complaints. I just really wondered.
Well, we, we tried. We thought it would be a good idea. We charged two dollars a trip. And we thought we would come up with the idea of charging five dollars to deter people from calling the same day. So we charge them five dollars if they call the same day. Okay, sure, fine. Yeah. And so.
We also offer C-click Fix now as a way to schedule rides too, right?
We do. We can go through C-click Fix as well and you can set up your ride there. Some of those are a little more difficult for us to get if they're made after hours. So, yeah, trying to get into dispatch is our main, main goal in getting that and talking to them specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five, update on future direction of ENID Television Network.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll kick that off and Derek will go through the presentation here in a moment. This is really, I, I talked to some of you about looking at the limited resources we have and the most effective ways of trying to get our message out and communicate. I know I've gotten a lot of feedback from various folks in the advisory committee, the ETN Advisory Committee specifically. We've talked about this for a while, but specifically the last meeting, which I think was last week and the meeting about three months before that too. Looking at, at, really a couple of things. What's the most effective way to get our message out? And we believe that's not, I, I've come to the conclusion that that's not TV programs. Now, a lot of our resources have been utilized to work on programming to fit the TV format. We did a survey. Derek's going to talk about all that. We're also at a crossroads where it makes perfect sense with some of the hardware improvements we will have to make to continue if we're going to continue doing TV programs. To look at this. Anyway, the future direction, I think, is to move away from the TV and focus on the internet-based technologies, the social media, the app, et cetera. Derek's going to go through the presentation. I know you got a lot of, you may have a lot of questions. And I want to make sure, this is kind of a check to make sure that we're on the right track. So anyway, Derek, why don't you go ahead and fire away?
Greetings, Mayor and Commissioners. We'll talk about the future direction of the ENID Television Network. Today, we'll talk a little bit about the cable history, the program, viewership, cable alternatives and our next steps. Here's a short timeline of cable history in ENID Oklahoma. Starting from the FCC creating the PEG channel, going through the Pegasus days and the ENID Television Network days and our view on the future. We have approximately about nineteen thousand households in ENID and fourteen thousand Southern Link cable subscribers, approximately. Throughout the years, the last seven years, the ENID Television Network transformed here in twenty thirteen. And we went, this is our staffing. We went from three staff and two volunteers to now today we have two staff. And these program numbers are the new programs that we did or began in those years. We did a survey on the cable network exclusively Channel eleven and one eleven, twelve, one twelve. Instead of like promoting it anywhere else, we wanted to make sure that the persons that were doing the survey were actually watching the television. And we had seven respondents. And as you can see, you can see the percentages of those, oh, sorry. You can see the percentage of whether they watch Channel eleven or twelve or both equally with just the seven. This is right here shows our website traffic from January to August. And as you can see, that the desktops or the devices, mobiles and tablets, are getting more. People want them more even access to our website versus the desktops.
How many page views is that?
Come again?
How many page views is that?
Page views. I have to, I would have to go back and look in the actual page views. And here's the viewership. Again, on all of our, so this is website, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, YouTube. And we're showing a, and it's just showing that we have more engagement. We have like fourteen, like I said, we have fourteen thousand Southern Link subscribers. But you can see here, we always have engagement way over. And this last month, August, that is, it really went up more. And that's basically based on a lot of the new programs we're doing on social media. Here's an example of a couple of cities that I was able to talk to that transitioned from cable, their PEG channels to using social media. And the town of, the city of River Falls, Wisconsin, said they didn't have any complaints. And they did it in twenty eighteen, but they haven't had a complaint since they started. This is a January twenty nineteen article. But I did talk to her even after this, a couple of months ago, and she said they still haven't had any complaints. And their focus was more so social media, archiving all their meetings on the website and showing meetings live like on Facebook. Here are some advantages of to transition into the internet-based and digital communications versus only, instead of the cable broadcast. We can, we have the ability to target audiences with our messages. We can build the trust with community. We can provide outreach and they can have one-on-one communication between, two-on, how do I do that? One-on-one communication between us and them or two-way communication. So the cable coverage we're having now and these are the programs categories. And this is the replacement that we're seeing that we can do. We can do our council meetings on Facebook Live, YouTube Live, and we can have them archived on YouTube, also the website. And this show will just go to peanut club of schools. They can do it on their channel. And these other community programs will still remain some of our, like, community talk. We'll just still have those programs. We'll just put them on our Facebook and YouTube channels. These are the platforms, all of the platform, platforms we're using right now as far as social media and the websites. We have four domains. And you can see all the amount of social media pages that we have. Here's the main two that we're using, the city of ENID and the ENID Television Network. So for this year, our Facebook city on the city government Facebook page, these are the top ten videos seen and we've reached total views of those ten were twenty-eight point four thousand. And our Facebook videos on the ENID Television Network, which is basically shows. We do cross-post government things on this channel, but it's mostly community-related. So that's why you'll see different programs here. They're just community-based. And even on this channel, they look at more of the community's things. Even though we cross-post the government things, they look at the more, more of the community things on that Facebook page. And that reached twelve thousand. Here's some examples of Facebook events calendar. Right now, on the Television Network, we use bulletin boards. Anybody give us any information about events here, we put it on bulletin board to go rotate on television. But we just say we can just use the events calendar on Facebook and it is, it has a better impact. So even for the Christmas in Park this year or last year, got forty-six point nine thousand. Reached, reached that many people. And the Hundred Gym, which we only set up last month, has already got nine thousand people. As you see those others. So the total reach was a hundred point five thousand. Here's just an example of the impact of videos on Facebook and YouTube. Here's a program about remembrance of the Memorial Day and we upload it to Facebook, YouTube. And you can see the engagement, three points, three thousand, four thousand. Engagement means they liking it, they're commenting on it, they're sharing it. And the reach mean it reached them. They may not have looked at it, but the views are the ones who actually sat there and said, I'm going to watch this. So that's the difference in those three. Here's another example of a school zone. PSA, we did. And you can see the engagement, views and the reach there. And of course, this video, which we did a month or two ago, has reached. I say plus because even today it was higher than this. And people are engaging in, almost three thousand people engaging in it. Fifty, almost fifty-four thousand have actually viewed it. And we started crossposting all of our videos, which means you just upload a video to the main channel and that channel owns it and cross-post it to other related Facebook pages. We have partnerships with visiting it and the rest of a lot of other nonprofits. We can cross-post and tell them, okay, it's ready for cross-post. And they can put it on their page just as if they uploaded it themselves. So you get a lot of more viewership when you partner with other people to put it on their pages. Here are examples of the live videos we've done on Facebook, just showing you engagement. People just love to see things live. And so our new approach will, and that's, is to use internet, internet-based communication channels as we just described. And our goals are to keep on promoting the city brand, add value to what we're doing, show transparency, educate citizens and inform them. We started Mini Update was one of the programs we started to kind of keep them updated on what's going on. And we have like, seriously, about a hundred different types of programs in mind to inform them, educate them about our processes, because many times they don't understand our processes. Right now, current TV programming, this is our current TV programming, as you can see. And we were going to, so existing, we've already been doing these four programs on TV, I mean, on social media. We began these within the last month or two. And these are some of the ones that we, I've just put on that we're going to begin to do more. So, but that's just way more than that. But those are some of the new programs we're looking at. Here's a timeline of transition from cable programming to using those digital communication tools. So the last day, final day to actual cable cast anything to the TV will be November thirtieth. And after that, we'll just have a bulletin referring them that to the social media accounts and that type of. So to make everyone aware of this, we've already talked to churches about the programming. And we're going to, of course, press release and information, you know, videos on our stations about the change. We'll put it on our website and on the social media posts. Here's an example of a bulletin we'd have for television, for instance. Just let them know that we're going to be going off. Cable has December thirty-first. And they can reach us here. Cable has a December 31st, and they can reach us here. Here's an example of, we'll do this for every church to give them the timeline, I mean, the web, you know, information, check out their Facebook, their YouTube. And that is it. Any questions?
So, what happens to those two channels?
Right now...
I'll jump into Derek on that one. That's a good question. Several things could happen. What we're proposing right now, if you think we're on the right track, is that we would start advertising at some point along a timeline like that about where we're transitioning people. The survey showed there were seven people. There may be 100, there's more than seven, but it's way less than all those views we've shown. The channels could still be, we're not telling Southern Link that, you know, we don't want the channels anymore. What we're telling is we're not going to be, if we continue on this path, we're not going to be preparing programming for it and broadcasting at some point. And we spoke to them actually today, I think.
Yes.
Derek was in a meeting with them, talking about other stuff, but we talked about this too, and the possibilities of, one of the crossroads I talked about, part of the issue is not just what makes the most sense to get the best efficiency out of our limited resources, but we also have issues with some of our equipment that is going to cause upgrades. It's driving the December 31st timeline. We still have the capability, though, I believe, talking to Southern Link, either through Southern Link or maybe, AJ can talk about, maybe disconnecting from the network, to show some, basically a few slides like he showed in the examples of where to go to get information in the future. So, the channels may still be there, 11 and 12, but instead of seeing bulletin boards or on 11's community programming, whatever you may see there, 12 is government program. Instead of seeing 30-minute shows, community talks, or maybe not community talk, but City Connections and things like that, you would just see those slides about where to go to get our information. The advisory board, Jonathan, you may want to talk about the advisory board, because we talked about keeping the possibility of the channels, if we can figure out a way in the future to take our content, this digital content, and stream from YouTube or someplace.
Just, I mean, it just isn't fiscally responsible for us to continue to press on the cable when we know the migration, where trends are going. And so, our thought process was, sitting on the board, and pretty much the consensus from the group was this, if we're going to produce content or we're going to create content, we make it on the platform in which we're already utilizing, then if we have a way in order to be able to duplicate it and then produce, put that content on cable without a huge expenditure to make, to make that happen, then we can go ahead and do that. But as it stands right now, we still haven't found a cost-effective way of doing that when the vast swath, you know, the huge swath of people that are watching this content are going to be able to get it from social media in a much simpler fashion, which is the way everything is trending at this particular point. There are some visions of, some things we can do in the future in terms of expansion of what we can do in terms of taking community content and broadcasting it in that same form, but we want to see how, how well we can, we can produce this content and put it on and put it out for the, for the community to see as it stands now before we, you know, open up the floodgates, because there's a potential for, you know, failure, and we don't want to do that with somebody else's content. We want to make sure our content is done, done right first before we open, open up the floodgate.
Is this, is our ownership of these channels part of the Southern Link franchise agreement? Or is that where, and is that up for renewal in 2020? Guess there's no value. I mean, God, I wonder if we could bargain it away for some trade-off?
On October 15th, by the way, that's a good point. In the study session, we're going to talk about the franchise agreement.
Okay.
And steps moving forward. And we've spoken with Southern Link. It was very fortuitous, the meeting today, about other things that also...
Would they like to buy them?
I don't know about that, because they provided them initially because of the agreement in public.
Yeah, because of the PEG, you know, that's a part of the...
When the transition occurred from Pegasus to what we have now, the franchise agreement had included payment for rent to the city for Pegasus. That went away, so we lost that, the transition, because they moved into a city building. But anyway, really, the point is beyond the impact, it takes a lot of effort. We're moving towards lower no-production type stuff, because that's the way the world is. People do Facebook Lives, FaceTimes, all kinds of stuff. Our traditional effort at programming is high production time. It takes effort to put stuff together, it's in 30-minute formats, and it's more challenging. We could still, and still would have that capability, not through TV, but through Facebook Live or YouTube, and probably other technologies as those emerge.
Are other communities moving away from cable, apparently?
I think so. Derek has reached out to several. I know I spoke with Norman. They still have one channel, but I know from the guy I talked to, they're struggling too with what do we do with it? And you know Norman's University Town. So, probably if I asked in this room, if we did a survey in this room of who has Channel 11, 12, 111, and 112, we might have seven people. I don't know. I have it, but I only probably watch it.
Also say who watches it. That's the key.
I watch my interviews. They're awesome.
And they are. It's okay. YouTube, you're covered.
Well, and the good thing about moving to a social media platform is that not only now do we, we have it, we can measure how many people are actually watching it, and we can, we can gear our content based on who our, what our viewership is. And so, we have a lot more feedback from the social media platform than we've ever been able to get from cable. Because right now, where we, even when we deal with Southern Link, they can tell us how many people, you know, subscribe to Southern Link, but we have no measurable to find out how many people actually turn to the channel and watch it. That all gets changed when we go to social media platform, because we can see not just who watches it, but how much of the content that they watch and how frequently in which they watch it. That gives us a whole lot more control and the ability in order to be able to produce content that people will actually pay attention to.
So, there's no Nielsen rating for...
For a price.
Okay.
Well, really, this is a study session. So, really, what I'm looking for is are we on the right track?
Yes.
If somebody has a major issue with this, then we want to slow down a little bit, but...
No.
Well, we'll continue doing that. We have spoken with the churches about this.
The church is moving.
But we'll also reach out, as Derek said, to the churches to try and transition through this. We don't see this as a negative thing about we're stopping something or turning something off, although we won't be doing that. We see it as an effort to improve our communication and outreach.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Item number six, I mean, we're at 6:17 already. Is this going to take a while? Can we move it to the next session?
He can, he can get it done.
He can get it done?
He can get it done, can't he?
It's very brief if you want to be very brief.
Okay. Item number six, discuss the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Authority, OMMA, fee schedule ordinance revision.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. What we're requesting here is back on August 30th, OMMA put into effect a compliance check where all cities and counties now have to go to every dispensary, growery, processor, and transporter and inspect the building, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, fire, and safety, then bring it back, sign it, take it to Carol, have her review it, sign it, and then give it back to them so that they can renew or get a new license. All we're asking is for $100, $150 fee to help offset some of the cost of all of us going out there and doing all this.
Okay, that's easy.
About how many are there?
Yeah.
There are roughly, as of Monday when I checked, there are 65 current commercial operations, and we have received permits on an additional 10 that we do not have currently, are not currently licensed with OMMA.
There's 65 here in Enid?
Yes.
I mean, there was a lot.
That is, that is, the predominant number on that is growers.
Okay.
There are approximately 30 to 40 of those, and then the rest are dispensaries.
And there are lots of individual inspections for each one of these compliance reports, like five or six.
We attended the OML last week, and one of the workshops I went to was presented by an official from the city of Ardmore, and that's exactly what they charged us, $150. I was just curious, on their renewals, they charge, they charge, they tell us, what did I tell you?
I thought it was like $1,000 or $1,500.
Yeah, it was like $1,500 for renewal.
Why?
You're making it now.
Now, we're going to get it paid on it.
Sounds better.
Thank you, Ken. Sounds better.
Yeah.
No, that's about what the, back when I was in the restaurant nightclub business for liquor license, that was about the renewal, somewhere in that neighborhood, so...
What were they, I mean, that's...
That's all state-run now.
Yeah, we could say that's, that would go to the state.
Yeah, the renewal of the license.
This was the city license back then, is what I'm talking about.
Sure, OMMA is charging them some significant renewal fee as well.
Prime, yeah.
Jeez. Okay. All right. Good.
Thank you.
All right. That's all we have on the agenda. We're going to, we'll be adjourned, we're going to meet upstairs at 6:30.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one second?
Yes, sure.
I know, I know you've got 10 minutes. So, I know most of the people in this room have been tracking the news about NextTerra Energy and the wind farm northwest of Enid, in the carrier, all that kind of area. We have been in multiple negotiations back and forth with that company to mitigate, to ensure that Vance has what we need to be able to do to fly airplanes and all that kind of stuff. We are almost into a place where we can go into a mitigatable agreement, and they've moved 80 of their 100 towers out of places that we didn't want them to be able to do, so they've actually been a very good actor in this, in this thing, trying to get to a reasonable solution. So, you may see other things happen shortly that they may take this and make an announcement, so...
Yeah, I think what we'll do is put that on the agenda for coming meeting, because open the meetings, Hank, we can't talk about what's not on the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
But no, that's, that's quite all right, but I think it's something that we want to get up to. Yeah.
Under public discussion at the real meeting, you could get...
I'm happy to do whenever you want, anytime to tell you what's going on.
Sure. All right. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you for watching the Enid Television Network broadcast of the Enid City Council Study Session. Replays of the meeting will air on Channel 12 and 112, including a live stream of the meeting at enitv.org.